I've got seven o'clock. Everyone ready? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the special meeting, the first special meeting to order on this day, October 22nd, 2020 for Grand City Community College. The purpose of the special order is, or special meeting is to approve a a project or a grant and we'll have consecutive special meetings here back to back for approval of three different items and then we'll have a fourth one for an executive session. But what we'll do is go ahead and do a roll call for everyone that's here. This is Blake, present.
Shannon Smith, present.
Marilyn Douglas, present. Beth Tedrow, present.
David Rump, present.
Leonard Pitts, present.
Okay, great. So we'll go ahead right into the consent agenda, the consideration and approval for the refrigerated truck and meat, for meat science. There is, I would suppose if anybody would like further discussion on that or motion of the action.
This does everything we needed to do, is that correct?
It does. Yes, thank you. Aspect of it there as far as why we selected the Dodge City International as it is local and also has lower mileage. It does provide all aspects of what we need to approve it. But we had other bids.
I move that we accept the bid as, as presented by the Dodge City, the Dodge City, I'm struggling this morning. The Dodge City International for 2018 refrigerator box truck at the cost of $54,500.
I second it.
Okay, I got a motion in a second for the approval Dodge City International 2018 refrigerated box truck at the cost of $54,500. Taking into consideration of all the other bids, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Passes and we'll go ahead and adjourn that meeting. Immediately going into the second special meeting, special second meeting. Do we need to do a roll call? Now, nobody's left. Everybody's still present. We're going right into the second special meeting. And this is the consideration and approval for the virtual welding simulators. If you all remember, we talked about that last board meeting. And again, the information and the biddings are provided there for everyone to have a chance to look over. But I will entertain any discussion or a motion of approval or motion of second for the approval.
Once again, it's a good thing to have local people voting, committing bids.
Yeah, in this case.
You think they'll work on it too?
It's nice when local bids come in lowest.
This is Marilyn. I make a motion that we accept the bid as presented from Lampton Welding for the welding trainers at a cost of $207,592.32.
Listen, David, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second for the, for VR welding trainers from Lampton Welding at the cost of $207,592.32. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. All right, moving on to the third special meeting, third special meeting. Again, nobody's left. Everybody's here still. So third special meeting, this is a consideration for the approval of the access control. There's some information there, but of course the active controls will be for all accesses across campus better, better able to lock down and facilitate keys, things like that. Again, several bidding bidders from there. Everyone can take a look at that. If there's anything somebody would like to discuss or have any questions about, otherwise I would also.
I'm gonna re-put myself.
Yeah, that's fine.
Relate it to somebody.
That's fine. At the, at the time of motion, that's fine. So there's any questions or anything?
I'm just gonna, just wanted to acknowledge Ryan and his work applying for the Spark funding. I know that, that was a process built through and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Love seeing you on that.
Yeah.
I see Derek here. Is there anything that we, he needs to add or he forgot to add to this?
No, I could ask Derek to do present in case you were, any questions on that? I think you, you know, the concept of this project is outlined there within the board package. Well, outlines the benefits will come from this and definitely those addressing areas around our facilities and strategic plan and also increasing safety across the industry as well.
So can you tell me just a little bit or maybe go in, obviously we're kind of in the middle of the run of as far as bids. You know, with the, maybe the high being 170 and the low being 78. Why, why the middle of the road and which most of these are from out of town anyway, so it's not any local presence. Why, why, why that one?
I'll give you, I'll give you my elementary explanation and all that there. Essentially the recommendation for it comes down to really the use of the software and the integration that they have available. So what they, what they use as far as their software packaging allows us to be able to have better integration into existing systems. It also allows us to be able to integrate onto DataTill, to our new student mobile app that allows for doors once installed to be unlocked there with cell phones. Also, when it integrates with our student mobile app, then it'll be able to have my students that can hold up their phone there to the, to the control pass they need access to buildings. This was the, this was a software package that provided the most ability and kind of looking to be future focused. All of these are ones that they get us to the point of being able to have access to. This one is the most future focused and allows for future integrations with other mobile platforms and other issues we have done with. Derek, I don't know if there's other.
Yeah, so when we went out for a day, we were, we looked at the different software that they're offering and mainly it's difference between a SOAP API and a REST API. And the SOAP is what the military uses. It's very, very secure, but it's slow, it's outdated. And a lot of these companies, what they did was they upgraded their user interface and then at the back end of the software. So it's, it's older and they're gonna have to update sooner or later. So we didn't want to go five, four years later than it's a need to update your, your access control software that you just put in. Whereas RESTful is faster, it's smoother, it's quicker, it talks to a lot of our student information systems like DataTill. And once we put that in the world, Gallagher is the premier provider in access control and they're, they're working in Dodge City Community College right now. They're working in Sunbar State Banks, numerous banks throughout the state. So we wanted to make sure that we were looking at the long term rather than short term.
Why I make a motion?
One thing I would, just for the motion here on this, with the other recommended board action, part of the budget information, now we may just instead of saying going through Spark funding, maybe this is, say that it comes through stimulus funds allocated through.
Okay, okay.
That way there are, I should respond to that.
Sure. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the the Ken Brothers Access Control Hardware and Software for the cost of $156,843.91 through the use and the payments will be used through various stimulus package funding.
This is Marilyn Douglas. I second the motion and I wanted to add that I appreciate your assessment of the whole situation and found it very detailed. Thank you.
So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and then we have one review. Okay.
Thanks, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. Get a chance to have Dave come back and join us. We'll go right into the fourth special meeting. This is for the purpose of an executive session. I'll need a motion on that for non-pleas now. There will be no action taken and it'll be just Ryan and the board.
Chairman Wassinger, I move that the board recess into executive session to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma. And the open meeting will resume in the conference room in 20 minutes. Dr. Ryan Ruda and the board will be present. No action will be taken. I second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to go into executive.
Oh, Beth.
Beth.
Beth seconds. I have a motion in a second to go into executive session with no action taken with just the board and Dr. Ruda for 20 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll resume in 20 minutes. Got 7:11, 7:31? We'll do seven, I got, it turned to 7:12, so 7:32.
How you doing today? Dreaming well.
Remember the volleyball lesson again?
Oh, yeah. Wouldn't miss it.
Well, I know. Sorry to talk again.
Well, we'll make it early morning for, we start. Well, we'll make it early morning for, for you start. Well, we'll make it early morning for, for you start.
That's on.
We waited until seven o'clock after the time change?
What?
Couldn't it be seven AM if we could tell after the time change?
After the time change?
It wouldn't feel so early.
Okay, um, we are all back, um, from executive session, no action was taken. Um, and that is all for this special meeting, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming out seven in the morning, get through some of this.
Yes.
Guys, have a good day.
Same to you.